So Minister, the panel understands that the government is reviewing certain health and safety legislation to make sure it's fit for purpose. Whilst responsibility for the Health and Safety Inspectorate falls under the Minister for Social Security, it sits with Injustice and Home Affairs. And results of any changes may have an impact on frontline emergency staff. So what could you tell us about that work?
That's correct. The Minister for Social Security announced that she would be reviewing the legislation in relation to health and safety. And the review has only just started. And I believe you may very well have been provided with the principles of that review. The review really is to ensure that it is fit for purpose and that the law is implemented and pleased effectively. It is too soon to say whether there will or won't be any changes obviously to that legislation and whether there will be any impact on frontline staff. It is, as I said, difficult at this stage to actually say whether there will or won't be depending on the changes. What I would like to say to the panel is, is the fact that myself and the Minister for Social Security will be liaising with each other over the legislation and there will be some discussion. Although that hasn't happened as yet due to obviously the summer period and people having taken holidays. But we will be collaborating in relation to that legislation.
Okay, that's great. So you know how long this review process is intended to take?
From my memory, it's going to be taking place fairly soon. So it will be anticipated that it will conclude in the spring of 2025.
Okay, and can you give any details about specific aspects at the moment?
Unfortunately, a lot. As I said, the legislation sits with the Minister for Social Security and it needs to be reviewed in order that the decisions can be made as to if it is fit for purpose. And then any changes that will be necessary, obviously, we will discuss from the point of view whether any of those changes will have any impact on any of the emergency services to which I'll have responsibility.
Okay, so I think this is the last question about the actual review I've got. Please, can you describe the criteria that will be used to determine if the current laws are fit for purpose in protecting both emergency staff and the public?
Obviously, the legislation is to protect health and safety and welfare of people whilst at work. That is also obviously to ensure health and safety of members of the public and compliance with any of the legislation. And whether or not sanctions within that law should or should not, you know, be either sanctions either for individuals or corporate bodies. So those really, those elements will be looked at. And as I said, I will work closely with the Minister in relation to the any impacts that it will have on the emergency services moving forward if there are in fact changes made.
Okay, great. So still on the subject, but not about the review itself. Has Justice and Home Affairs taken any action to provide further health and safety guidance or training to frontline staff as a result of recent events or as a consequence of the decision to review the health and safety legislation?
Do you want me to come in? So nothing specifically as a result of the recent cases changed in the way that we generally manage health and safety in the department or in the ambulance service. What we have done is sought to reassure staff in relation to their insurance arrangements and any indemnity arrangements that are in place. So they mainly apply to issues such as medical malpractice or clinical decisions rather than in the event of a criminal prosecution as we saw in the recent case. The key thing that's allied to that is of course reassuring and assuring staff that we have got clear policies around violence and aggression as well, which I suspect you might have questions on later. So there's been no specific change to the way we generally manage health and safety in the department as a result.
Pending the outcome of.
So about the moment, that's a no, just to to check that everyone knows what's already there?
Yeah.
Okay. So what policies are currently in place with regards to health and safety for frontline staff in Justice and Home Affairs, particularly in relation to incidents of violence? You know, so how many and also how many incidents of violence have been recorded so far this year? So when they're working there?
So I haven't got the figures in front of me. We have had a number of press and freedom of information requests about the number. It is a comparatively low number of reported instances of violence and aggression. I think the latest request is actually asking across a whole range of services, including having community services on which there has been some media coverage which wrapped up ambulance, but also across other Justice and Home Affairs and other services. So it's probably wise if we write to you with the very latest figures that we'll be compiling for that freedom of information request. In terms of policy and procedure, we have clear policies in place for staff that if they are under threat and they're being treated with violence or aggression by a patient, they can withdraw until such time as it's safe for them to give the care that that person needs. They clearly can't give care while they're being treated in a violent or aggressive way. We will be running a media camp, we've done it before, but we will be running a media campaign in autumn, putting the spotlight on that and highlighting that. It's as simple in some ways as help us to help you and don't treat our staff inappropriately. You'll be aware that HCS have just run a big racism campaign as well, which is allied to this and have also increased their focus on violence and aggression. It's the top line message is that there's zero tolerance to violence and aggression and that really backs our staff in saying if you encounter that behaviour, you can withdraw. But the important thing is that there's then a dynamic risk assessment and if the situation changes, then they they need to go back in and provide care to the patient.
Okay, and if if a member of staff has been attacked by someone that they've been trying to help, if that does happen, is there a clear structure for what they do?
Yes, so they obviously in the very immediate position, they'd be backed, treated, supported by their immediate team, would then be reported to management as a system with DAYTEX, which is the governance system in HCS and ambulance also use it for the reporting of any incident. And there's a wide range of things that need to be reported. Violence aggression is one. And we will then provide appropriate support, investigate that incident and provide appropriate support to the member of staff. We haven't been quite as good at investigating those as we should have been and there has been some press coverage on that. That's partly because we didn't have the staff structures in place to ensure that we were doing that in a consistent and well-resourced way, which we now have. So that has changed as of about two or three months ago.
Okay, thank you. So you've been able to send us the written, the numbers arriving, which would be the incidents of violence recorded so far this year
Yeah.
for frontline staff and also for the States of Jersey Police?
Yeah, that's covered in the, you may not have seen it, but it's covered in the latest freedom of information request. So the teams are literally working on gathering it in the next few days. So we'll send you those.
Thank you.
Can I also make a point? Obviously, if a member of any of the emergency services is assaulted, then that matter will be investigated and those people dealt with as well. That's a very important point to make.
Thanks, great, all right. And how will the government engage with frontline staff about any changes to policy or legislation as, you know, if that's to come about?
I think it will be necessary if the legislation is deemed to need changes, then there will be a briefing to yourselves obviously, but also as well to the Health and Social Security scrutiny panel alongside emergency services. Anybody that will be affected by any changes that will be made will be briefed on those changes in order that people are fully aware as to what their responsibilities are and how the legislation has changed, if it does.
Okay, thanks. So just some more questions now about the ambulance service, more general questions. Minister, could you tell us what your priorities and plans are for the States of Jersey ambulance service?
Obviously, the ambulance service had a review recently and the, there's good progress being made in relation to the implementation of those findings of that peer review undertaken by the Association of Police Chief Executives. The final stages of the implementation of those findings, the demand and capacity review are underway and hopefully will be completed by early 2025. In relation to plans for the service, as you will be aware, there was, there's been increased levels of 12 additional posts to meet the, to assist in meeting the additional demands of the service. And six posts were newly funded and six were transferred from the intermediary ambulance crews. Additional patient transport resources now include a routine stretcher transfer resource to take further pressure off the emergency service during the day. This is working well. Despite absorbing a significant range of calls, the service is still under increasing demand in relation to emergencies. The implementation of the new management and support structure agreed in late 2023 is almost complete with the final management post having been recruited to starting next month. It is also looking potentially to look at all of the rotas in order that potentially to introduce a 1900 to 0100 hour team, because obviously that night time can be quite a challenge as well. Obviously, they'll be coming forward, they're preparing for the regulation of care and that's also progressing well. And they're in dialogue with the Jersey Care Commission, who will be providing feedback. I think it's important to acknowledge that the ambulance service does still have, as we said, a very high level of calls. And and what we would ask is is that those calls for those services are, when somebody's considering it, that they are emergencies in order that we can actually allocate our resources to where they're sort of the most needed.
My next question was going to be, can you advise what work remains ongoing as a result of the previous demand and capacity review and the AAC independent review? But I think that was what you were laying out. Is there anything else to add or?
No, if you've got anything else, I'm okay. There's some more technical things around the ACE review in terms of certain types of management practice and paramedic practice. But other than that, we've made good progress, particularly on the structures, as the minister said, so.
Okay, and you think we completed in 2025?
Yeah.
Okay, and I just have a question now about the number of staff because I've actually found this quite confusing looking at, you know, the changes of the plans over the last few years. So in 2023, the demand and capacity review had indicated there was a shortfall of 13.2 full-time equivalent employees. Can you provide details about the current number of full-time employees in the ambulance service and also how many current vacancies there are?
Yeah, you can see me just flicking to it. So the current staff level is 82 in total. I don't have it broken down more into the number of paramedics and technicians and emergency care assistants here. So we can write to you on that. There were very few vacancies in that. We're fairly fully recruited. So as the minister said, most of the new posts created by the demand and capacity review and the government plan investment are filled. We've got one more, which is a UK appointed, just due to start. So if you're happy for us to, we'll take that away and we'll write to you afterwards with the exact figures, but.
Yes, please. And if you could also tell us what roles the vacancies are for, that would be great. Okay, thank you. I think that's over to you. Mark, unless anyone wanted to add anything else, now it's up to you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Minister, I'd like to ask you some questions if I may on the combined fire and ambulance station. Minister, you previously advised a panel in May that you were meeting with the other ministers in June to discuss the future of the combined fire and ambulance station and Rouge Bouillon school site. What can you tell us about the outcome of that meeting, please?
Right. The council of ministers are still prioritizing the discussions in relation, it's a bit of a puzzle. So Gas Place is part of that puzzle. And so as you rightly asked, we met and we are pretty much aligned. Myself, the Minister for Infrastructure and the Minister for Education and Lifelong Learning. So we're pretty much aligned, but as I said, it's part of the puzzle. And what we need to do is, we need to sort of be able to work out which part comes first and decisions need to be made about Gas Place. And then once those decisions are made, the rest of the puzzle can can follow. The long-term capital plan has set out in the budget, which obviously we will probably talk about in the weeks coming, highlights that the investment for Rouge Bouillon will be in 2028. And that's considering realistic estimates on the delivery of capacity within government and the construction sector to commence this programme of work. We are working with Jersey Property Holdings to ensure that the current buildings are appropriately maintained in the meantime. Obviously, what you can appreciate is, as I said, that because it's part of a puzzle, we need to be able to have a decision made about one part in order that we can then facilitate the things that follow. And so realistically, to say that it's going to be done sooner is probably not going to be an option.
Can you clarify within that framework whether a decision about location for the new station has been made?
As far as I'm concerned, the current thinking is that the location will be in the similar location to where they are now, as in it's unlikely that they will move from that location. But but we do have to manage where, as I said, the school at Gas Place alongside what happens to Rouge Bouillon. Because as you'll be aware, there is a proposition that was brought forward that nothing can happen with the fire station until such time as a facility for a new school and the organisation of Rouge Bouillon School is actually done. So I think realistically, as I said, they will maintain their location. But that's what is on the table today, that they will remain in that location. But obviously, if something else comes to the front in the next year, 18 months, then that may change. But at this present time, I can say that they are likely to stay at the same location.
Can I just interrupt there?
Yes.
When you say stay in the same location, do you mean the ambulance on the ambulance site and the fire on the fire site? Or are you still talking about a combined location?
It is unlikely that they will be combined unless things change.
So we're no longer talking about a combined fire and ambulance, we're talking about two separate?
It is more than likely than that is what is likely to happen.
And you did say not until 2028?
Yes, because as I said, of all of the dynamics of it actually happening. But of course, you know, it's not just about modern buildings. It is actually about having facilities that are suitable for the modern day as opposed to what the facilities that both those entities currently have. So that's what's likely to happen.
Would it be fair to say therefore, Minister, that there's no current timeline for this project?
I wouldn't like to say that, actually. What I would like to say is is that before, certainly there's going to be more feasible feasibility work done during the remainder of this year in order that the programme and the costs and the solutions can actually be sort of worked up and completed. What I would like to see, and I think my colleagues, my other two ministerial colleagues would like to see the same, is is that within the next 12 months that we've actually, you know, I'd like to say quicker than that, if I'm perfectly honest. I'd like to see it within by the end of this year, but if that that may very well not happen. But what I would like to see following that feasibility work, I would like to see a clear plan. Obviously, when we are creating a new facility, we do have to be minded to what the capabilities of the government as a whole is and what our resources are to be able to facilitate having different projects moving forward to this kind of scale alongside any sort of construction that's going to be required. So but I would like to, I would like to be able to say that within the next six months to a year that it would be a clear picture as to what's going to happen next.
What role will each department have in development of this capital project?
Well, obviously, the fire and ambulance fall under the Minister for Justice and Home Affairs and obviously the Infrastructure Minister has responsibility for the property holdings and all the property which comes under the States of Jersey, under the government. Obviously, the, because it involves a school on the site of the fire station at the moment, that has to include the Education and Lifelong Learning Minister as well. So the three of us have to have and have had those discussions. I think we're all of the same or similar views as to what needs to happen next. And so I think that, you know, once a sort of final decision can be made about the start of the of the process, if you like, then then that can then move forward. It's just the decisions made. So I think all three of us have to be involved alongside, obviously, education, as in the head of education, and also both fire and ambulance as, you know, consultation. Because of course, if you're building a fire station or a school or an ambulance station, then you need to have some input from the persons who are going to be using those facilities.
Of course. I just wanted to ask another couple of questions based on, have you identified any risks or obstacles that you perceive for either of these services in the near future?
In relation to what?
In relation to these two different sections, these two different properties, as it were.
Do you mean the the structural? Well, I think, you know, property holdings will have to maintain those buildings for as long until such time as they are given a new facility. Obviously, that, you know, technically is dead money. So that's why this needs to be expedited and done as quickly as possible. It's like with everything, it's like, you know, the length of time taken to deliver new buildings that are required has a serious impact on the money that we are wasting. So from my perspective, that is why it needs to be done sooner rather than later. Because obviously, in relation to the current site for the ambulance, one would assume that that site could potentially be demolished. I don't know because I don't know the facts and figures about it. But obviously, the fire station is different because it's a listed building. So but but all of those, you know, challenges would be as they are now. But the facilities need to be safe and secure for those people that work in them. And so, as I said, that's, you know, the biggest concern and that's why we need to get this done quickly.
That was actually the purpose of my next question, was to maintain the safety and appropriateness of each building. And you're assuring us that that will be the case.
Of course, that has to be the case because we can't have people working in an unsafe environment.
Can I just, should I just come in briefly? So you'll recall that there is quite a significant investment in the ambulance station maintenance in the current government plan, which has kicked in in this year. So JPH have made some really good progress on that. The consequence of this scheduling is that we need to look at what the equivalent needs to be for fire and rescue. It will it will be less, it's a more sound building, but there will need to be investment. I think the other following thing I'd just administer, if that's okay, is we will do some further feasibility work on the concept of separate facilities in the next few months because we have, of course, up to this point pursued a joint facility. So it's a shift in strategy. When we do that, we'd be very keen to come and give you a private briefing on what that looks like, obviously specifically. You've got both interests with school and and home affairs. And we'll do that as a joint briefing with with sites. The departments are working very effectively together now on what the strategic solution should be here. And once we've done that, we'll also be communicating more with staff because we haven't done that recently because we've been sort of considering what the strategic position is. So we will do that in the, probably in the beginning of the new year, once we've done the feasibility work.
On our visit to the fire station, there were a few limitations that were put to us about the building and the size of the entrances at the front.
Yeah.
So we are concerned about the safety of that building.
Yeah, I mean, we manage those operational constraints and have done for many years. There are more infrastructure issues at ambulance, which have, at least for the next five years, been met through that government plan money, which is good.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
On to me, I've got picked up Deputy Pore's questions here, so, because she's not able to be here today. So a couple of areas from me, first of all, modern day slavery and then moving on to the Violence Against Women and Girls Task Force. So in terms of modern day slavery legislation, which was a key priority and a goal for you, can you describe what those priorities and goals are of the modern day slavery legislation that's being developed, please?
Yes, officers are currently working to develop the modern day slavery legislation. A key sort of question for us in relation to that legislation is the function of the Gang Masters Labour Authority in the UK without introducing additional and sort of expensive bureaucracy. That is a part of the sort of legislation because the UK legislation is actually quite good legislation and would be quite, would work quite well for us. But of course, what we have is is that they have, well, they have the gang masters, but they also have the Anti-Slavery Commissioner. But what we need to be able to do is find, try and find a way forward that we can have those same sort of checks and balances, if you like, without having huge, great, big organisations to be able to look at those things and having more bureaucracy and more expense. Because obviously, what we see is is a lot of things are on big scale, whereas we're at a fairly small scale. So as I said, we are looking at the UK model of modern day slavery. But we need to try and work out how we're going to, if you like, monitor those people who are recruiting people, bringing people into the island and all of those sorts of things in order that we can make sure that it's manageable for Jersey without sort of being overly bureaucratic. I don't know if Nathan's got anything more?
Yeah, I think that's entirely right, Minister. So ultimately, the Gang Masters Licensing Authority in the UK has a budget of about 6.2 million and the Anti-Slavery Commissioner has a budget of about 630,000. About, I'm not sure how many employees the Commissioner has, the GLA of about 72. We know from painful experience in Jersey, that doesn't scale. You can't divide it by population size and say, well, that's how much it will cost here. It's inevitably going to be more expensive to put ahead to try and manage these systems. And I think we need to take a realistic view about the harm and effect of modern slavery in the way our employment law works around an absence of a Gang Masters licensing law. And so is it, is it the right vehicle to try and meet the harm? So most of modern slavery law is something Jersey could quite easily replicate. It's the usual thing, there's fences, there's rights, there's evidence gathering powers, there's enforcement powers, there's cheating. It really is the system of how you manage the entities operating in the space. So that's the piece of the work number line. The rest of the UK law is quite easy to follow. So we have a working group, we're going to be meeting in Q4 this year with JACIS and the States of Jersey Police to be invited, bring CLS in for the employment side, policy officers and hopefully other DAs.
So when are we likely to actually see the policy then, if you're meeting in Q4?
We're hoping because the question remaining is how you manage the entities in the space and the rest of it. Doesn't have that many options for answers. We'll be able to bring something to the minister till the end of the year.
Is there a suggestion that we won't end up with modern slavery law, but we will end up with legislation amendments to other statutes that might have the same effect?
Well, I mean, ultimately, how we manage bringing the policy into law is a discussion we're going to have to run. But I mean, I think modern slavery law is envisaged. It's what the minister has indicated.
Have you had any consultation with the local recruitment agencies around Gang Masters licensing at all?
Not at this stage, no, but that was sort of the intention will be to actually do that. We were just looking at what the alternatives were, but we obviously need to go to those organisations to ensure that, you know, A, everybody's actually aware what actually modern day slavery actually entails, but also to make sure that we can actually identify if this is this is happening. So we will have to go to those agencies, those recruitment agencies, particularly those that, it isn't obviously all only overseas workers, but in particular, you know, to ensure that where those people are being recruited, that they're being recruited in the right and proper way and and they're not being brought in under the law of modern day slavery.
At the last panel meeting, you referenced that there were some interlinking themes between modern day slavery and violence against women and girls. Can you tell us a bit more about how those two are interlinking?
Yes, obviously, in relation to one in particular, I think has been highlighted was where people have come to the island and then found them in certain types of domestic situations. And what we've been able to achieve through actually some work with JACIS and them highlighting a very good piece of, a good opportunity for us along with social security to be able to implement people who haven't been in the island for the requisite period of time, being able to receive 13 weeks of funding in order that they can get out of that situation. time, being able to receive 13 weeks of funding in order that they can get out of that situation and move forward. We've had positive feedback from some agencies in relation to that, where they have had people that have been in the island and have been able to leave the situation that they're currently in and, and be able to, to go and move forward. We do still have some work to do in relation to what happens after that three month period. And that is, is, is an ongoing thing. And that also includes the housing situation as well as that. So we're working with the policy officers from housing and the housing minister as to how we can actually work and move forward with that as well.
Excuse me, Helen, if I could just add, just thinking about the timeline, you've been talking about policy by the end of the year. So I assume that consultation with recruitment agencies and so on would have to be happening around now, to be able to manage that timeline?
Well, I suppose, I've not really thought about the timescales, if I'm perfectly honest, but we would obviously have to have consultation with them. We're not in a position to actually, as I said, they're looking at the options. But I think got to look at the option, I suppose it depends which way you're going to put the cart before the horse. We've got to look at what potential options would be and then we can consult in relation to them because at the moment, we don't actually have an option as to how we're actually going to deal with that. So I think we're not going to be going down the route of gang masters. So I think what we need to do is look at potentially how we could, what we could do and then we can consult with those, with those groups. And then potentially, they will be able to give us the feedback on what they think of that, of what we're considering and whether they've got any additional ideas in that space. So I think it's a bit maybe the cart before the horse or either way, but I think it's important that we try and work out potentially for ourselves what, what the opportunities may be and then to consult with them and see, you know, get feedback from those other agencies to be able to establish whether or not that is workable.
Okay, thanks. That takes us on to the Violence Against Women and Girls Task Force report. Can you provide us with an update on the recommendations from 2024 to 2026? And where we are with those, please?
Okay, there's obviously legislation development, which is including the domestic violence, non-fatal strangulation, sex offences and the stalking offences, which is all sort of progressing.
When you, when you say progressing, have you got an idea of a timeline on those?
The, the team have met with the LDO, the law drafting, to establish whether they've got the timescales. The funding, there's 50,000 in 2024 and 50,000 in 2025. And so therefore, the, they have at the moment, I'm right in saying they've got the capability to be able to move forward with the drafting. I, I don't know whether that's the exact time scale for that.
We haven't got the exact time scale sorted out yet. We've provided scoping instructions to the drafter so they can work with us and indicate when they might be free during the year.
Scoping instructions as opposed to drafting instructions?
Really interesting. So effectively, the pieces you have are stalking law, non-fatal strangulation piece, you have the changes to domestic abuse law and you have some cyber related offences about cyber flashing and sharing internet users. The plan at the moment, the drafter's, we've talked about with the drafter, is to deliver instructions for at least the first, the first two parts, which would be ideally non-fatal strangulation and the image offences and cyber flashing before the end of this year. With the hope that when, when our, when our dedicated drafting resource kicks in at the start of 25, they can immediately work on that, very rapid delivery. The stalking law is the longest piece. It's the most complicated and trying to find ways to deal with online stalking, what rights you have in the digital space, especially in a small jurisdiction where we can't threaten a multinational. You know, threatened is the wrong word, but negotiating power is weak when it comes to multinational entities. So how do you act then if you have a multinational entity hosting internal images of you? If you write to the courts, you might get a very good outcome, but it'll take a very long time. So how can we work with local providers, how can we work with international entities and take some rights to be able to address that harm? So there is a question around that, which puts stalking law on the longest timeline, intended to live before end of 25. But the rest of it, you should see arrive during the course of 25. But as I say, we haven't yet hammered out that.
Because you mentioned that you had a dedicated law drafting resource?
You will have one dedicated draft.
That's going to be hugely beneficial, isn't it?
It's the magic.
Absolutely, that's a really good move, isn't it? Thank you. In the panel's last hearing, you confirmed that there was an allocation of 309,500 for the delivery of the task force recommendations. Can you give us some specific detail about how that funding is going to be, has already been spent in 2024?
Right, some of the money in relation to 2024 will be spent on the independent reviews of SOJP and the LOD. The, we've identified an independent reviewer in relation, and I've had a conversation with an independent reviewer. And that is in relation to the LOD and there'll be a consultation with officers and that individual in Sep, in early September. And then a roundtable discussion will follow on from that to finalise the approach and the framework for the review and the initial starting of the work. And from then, there's money in 20, sorry, 2025 in relation to the family court review. And that piece of work, I still need to speak to a potential reviewer for us. That is following from the first review of the LOD because, as I said, the money comes back, but we want to be able to establish so that we get the right thing going in the right direction for the first review and then we'll bring in the second review because of course, the money is for the family courts is in 2025, not in 2024. In relation to the States of Jersey Police, they're going to be using the HMIC FRS. It's now shifted from November or October, November time into quarter one of 2025.
Sorry, can you just translate HMIC FRS?
Well, I think you might have to because I'm, sorry, it's Home Affairs, I don't...
It is the longest mnemonic in the history of inspectors. It's Her Majesty's Inspector of Constabulary and relatively recently, they added the Fire and Rescue Service. The inspectorate is a better way of saying it.
Yes, I knew what HMRC meant.
So they've been into review of practice this year?
No, next year, no. They will be coming in, in quarter one. There was a, there was a hope and anticipation that it was going to be this quarter, but unfortunately, it's now going to be in quarter one.
So is all of the 309,000 then gone on the pre-work for the criminal justice review?
No.
All right, so the breakdown of costs in 24 are behind a data analyst to try and synthesise information around the criminal justice system, in most cases that's already held and brought together, to try and get the profile of the information in the area around the extent of violence against women and girls in Jersey, which was the task force, which was the task force recommendation. We have about 50% of the project cost with Criminal Justice Review, as the Minister identifies this year, 50% coming next. And we have a normal component of two policy officers charged within that. In fact, it's turned into a sort of more shifting group of some policy officers, some interns, some assistants have come in and out throughout the process. It's a good one.
And is that funding going to be ongoing for 2025? So you're not going to lose any of those officers? And you're going to keep your data analysts?
The, the, well, I mean, the intention at the moment is to lose, is to lose none of the staff into, into 25, that, that cost might be sidelined into the divestment budget.
Divestment, okay. Not specifically around the separate law stuff?
Definitely.
In the States Assembly, you said that you were meeting with a barrister from the UK to discuss the reviews in relation to the Law Officers Department and the courts. You've just mentioned that there's some work going on there. Can you provide any further details about exactly how they're going to review the Law Officers Department?
Right, what will happen is, is that there will be a terms of reference, which is, I think has been actually worked up by a member of, of the team. And what will happen is, is that we need to actually, I've had a, as I said, the initial consultation with that individual. And then they will base their review on the terms of reference that we provide them. That, they, we still need that individual to meet with, around the table with the team, as in Nathan's team. And then we also need them to meet with all of the stakeholders. And so, once that has been facilitated in September, then we should be able to move forward with what that review will entail because...
Can you just tell us how the individual was chosen to take, to undertake the review? Did it go out to tender or did they advertise for the role?
No, it was, it was somebody that is involved in the UK within the space of domestic violence and also is, is a magistrate in the UK. And they were identified as a possible person that would be able to do the review for us.
Was that by the Law Officers Department or by Justice and Home Affairs?
It was actually identified, somebody was identified by the LOD, but the meeting was with myself only, not anybody from the LOD. So it was an individual that was identified from the point of view of the, the skillset that that individual had. There were other things that we potentially could have done, but obviously, we are sort of constrained in relation to costs. So we looked at that opportunity. I had a discussion with that individual and then, as I said, the team will then meet with that individual and then see what the plan is to move forward. It will be, sorry, it will be a separate individual who will be potentially identified to do the family courts. But what we need to do is, we need to be able to do an end to end service review of, from the starting with the police and then through the system, through to the LOD. So an end to end facilitation of what the service is providing and any loopholes or opportunities that we think we need to develop.
But the LOD and the Court Service are an independent service, so presumably there has to be some agreement with them for this review to take place?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, that's correct. And the, there has already been a meeting with the Family Court Service and they're already fully aware and they were, are supportive of, of an independent person.
That's family court, but the, the broader criminal justice system review. How are we making sure that the nuances of the Jersey system are kind of not lost in this review if we've got a UK reviewer doing it?
I think the, I think the thing is, is that I think with any review, you're not going to be able to get probably somebody within Jersey to be able to do that review. And the people that come into, you know, the, obviously, the, the police will be done by HMIC, I'll use HMIC. They will do the review of the States of Jersey Police as they've always done over the years, they've done reviews of, of different things within the States of Jersey Police. In relation to the LOD, there are numerous, there are differences, I do accept that. But obviously, what you do have is you do have UK judges coming to Jersey and sitting in our courts. You do have people coming into the family courts as well from outside. So I, I do believe that it has to be, it also has to be independent because I, I do believe that if you don't go to somebody outside of, of Jersey, then there will be the, the thought that it's been done in the house and that we are, we aren't actually taking it seriously, which I think, you know, it's important that we do and it's seen that we are actually having a proper review done and, and that it's being done by somebody independently.
Okay, thank you. Last question for me is, can you just tell us how you're tracking the progress of the recommendations for the VOG report?
I have a very good person in the department and it's not Nathan.
Although he is very good.
Nice.
We have an eye on my track of course, some recommendations are good if we can get it.
And what level of oversight is there from yourself and the council ministers on those recommendations?
I, I meet regularly with the person who's tracking them all. I'm chased on a regular basis about, just to make decisions about certain things. So I'm keeping a track on, on what's going on and what's happening. I've been briefed recently to sort of indicate because it's not all under me, there's all of the other departments as well. And so I've, I've been briefed and I'm regularly briefed at least once a month. It might even move to fortnightly if there's a need about what, you know, like health and social, health and social services are doing, education and all of the other ministerial departments that have got responsibility for some of the things coming under the VOG. So I, you know...
Is it ever put on the agenda for council ministers?
Yes, yeah, it's, it's on the agenda and obviously, it comes in the CSP, so it will always be discussed because it's in the, within the CSP, so it'll have to be always up there.
Lovely, thank you.
If I can just ask a question from what we've just been speaking about, come up from that. This barrister is a, is not going to be the same person who reviews the family courts?
No.
So can I just ask how that person will be chosen?
I think it will be somebody that will be identified. It'll probably be through somebody in the senior roles within LOD from the point of view that they've got those contacts. Also, as I said, part of the group that now meets regularly in relation to the family courts and those processes, that they are, they come in and out from the UK as well. So it, it isn't only local people that are actually working within the family courts. But I think it is important that whoever we identify has the necessary criteria to be able to make those reviews and to highlight any things that we need to actually improve on.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Chair. We're going to move on now to questions about building a safer community strategy. Minister, the updated building, a safer community framework was launched in June and one of the action areas identified was about leadership and support infrastructure, which included a reference to political will and leadership across government. Can you tell us about any priorities that have been identified by the political oversight group?
Right, as you rightly say, one of the sort of priorities is, is for us and will happen soon is, is that we will get full staffing within, within that section. We were one staff member short and hopefully that process will be completed by the week commencing the 2nd of September. The governance of, of, be it the Building a Safer Community Strategy will go through the safeguarding ministerial group with a coordinator and chief officer for JHA, all sitting within that group. I mean, obviously, the priorities have been, and we've already achieved this, was going into the schools because we'd missed or lost that opportunity in recent years. And so they've already delivered three pilots sessions within the schools, which of course involves all of the emergency, all of the JH team, you know, prison, immigration, customs, police, fire and ambulance. And so that, that is what is also key because all of those services are being able to contribute. It's been a huge success and the lessons learnt have been fed back in. And colleagues within, are also involved from the youth service as well. So that, at the moment, that is obviously one of the priorities is, is getting that in because you're talking to what is now year eight in relation to their actions and consequences, you know, fire safety, looking after their friends, exploitation and all of those sort of areas. So all of those things, I think, particularly in relation to young people, it's exceptionally important that we, we provide them with skills and understanding of the consequences of some of the things that may or may not happen. And so that for me is one of the high priorities about building a safer community because you need to start, you know, with young people in school moving forward. Obviously, the youth justice strategy is being finalised and I'll be reviewing it. The latest draft, which, you know, sort of goes back to 2019 alongside the coordinator of Basque and the chief officer in the next couple of weeks. I think that's probably it, I don't think there's quite anything else.
The political oversight group, as mentioned in my previous question, is the makeup of that group, the people you've just described, or was it more from the assembly or... or how does it made up and how often does it meet?
No, the oversight group, as I said, will go through the safeguarding ministerial group, which I chair. And then the, all the key players will be part of that group. So the structure will be, as I said, the minister, the safeguarding ministerial group, then with a coordinator from Basque, the chief officer of JHA. And therefore, all of those people will be part of the accountable group. So all of those will be members of those. It's not, as far as I'm aware, wasn't going to be on a broader spectrum to involve other states' members. But of course, what does happen and has already happened, as I think as Deputy Miles will say, is, is that there's already been something looked at in relation to, you know, matters that happen within the parishes or issues that need to be looked at and in, in relation to a holistic approach. And, you know, thi, this has been successful in the past and I think it's important that, you know, all states' members can be involved with building a safer community because it's not just about justice and home affairs, it is about the community as a whole being involved. And I think if you can get the buy-in from the community for anything, then it's going to have a really significant impact on being able to make things, you know, changing things and changing culture, culture potentially. So I think it's, it's very much, you know, it's a priority to be able to look at things and look at issues as a collective and to be able to work out what is the best solution, to be able to, I mean, they used to call it problem-solving policing, but I don't think it is problem-solving policing. I think it's problem-solving by the community as a whole because it isn't just policing, it is about the youth service and all of the agencies, but also about, you know, the elected members within the parishes as well and the community groups within the parish as well can, can certainly have a significant impact in improvements.
There seems to be an awful lot of buy-in from an awful lot of agencies here. Do you feel that there's departmental boundaries to overcome? And can you describe how that risk will be addressed?
The thing is, is that from my perspective, I don't, I don't think there is boundaries as such. I think you will get buy-in. The youth service, as an example, the youth service always, have always bought in, have always facilitated as much as they could activities. And of course, it's not all, you know, building a safer community isn't all about young people, it's about the population as a whole. But the youth service have, have always bought in. You know, in the past, you've had all of the agencies being, you know, committed to, as an example, the violence against women and girls, the infrastructure minister has agreed funding for lighting in Snow Hill. So that will improve the whole of that area. So I think the thing is, is that departments all have to buy in and be accountable. And I fully appreciate that we don't necessarily have legislation in Jersey. But I also think that because we're a fairly small community of 100,000 people and we don't necessarily have different authorities fighting over different money, I think because we're a collective, it's a lot easier to be able to manage it. So from my perspective, I don't see it as a problem of a buy-in and certainly I've had no negativity or not buying in from any of the sort of other ministers, ministers in other areas.
Obviously, part of this is going to be education, we believe firmly. What are the plans for educational programmes for, for children and young people as part of the universal prevention aspect of building a safer community?
From the point of view, as I said, you've, there's already been those inputs into schools, there's already that part of the educational programme. And then, you know, so effectively that is the buy-in from the education and the education programme. At the moment, it's focusing on, you know, your year eights going into the schools and providing them with all of that. But it's, it's about the involvement with the teachers within, within that programme as well, which wasn't probably so much in the previous reiteration of building it, when it was building a safer, safer society, there wasn't so much involvement. But certainly in this one, the actual teachers are providing inputs in relation to the young people, in relation to, I think from the one I went to, in relation to vaping, for example. So I think there is the buy-in from the schools in relation to that. And I think certainly from the point of view of the education and lifelong learning minister, he was saying to you that it, life is about, you know, it's not only when you're in school, but you're learning all the way through your life. So I think that there is that, that link. So I, I'm quite confident that education is, is fully on board with this. And I think in the past, there's been a lot more inputs, but I think it's, it's a case of starting here and seeing what we can develop moving forward.
At our last hearing, you mentioned pilot educational programmes at the Kennevah and La Rocka schools. How will the feedback from those be used?
Well, that, that, those feedbacks have already come through positively. And then of course, if, if there's, if there's anything that comes back in relation to the feedback from those areas, then that will, you know, whether something needs to be changed or altered or reconsidered, then that will be done at that stage. So that the programme, with everything, with every programme, you need to constantly monitor and you need to constantly move it forward. So it, you, you mustn't stay still, you must continue to move forward and continue to update it. And I think that was probably why in a way we lost Presley No Way, because we'd actually, it probably had sort of run its course and hadn't been developed further forward. And so that has, you know, as a starting point, you know, there's been a significant changes to the new thing that's now, education programme that's now going into schools. There's been significant changes to what it was previously. And, you know, one would expect that moving forward, that that would continue to evolve because things will continue to evolve potentially. You know, you may no, no longer have an alcohol problem or you, you know what I mean? Things will continue to evolve and you need to keep your, any of your training programmes updated and, and progressive moving forward.
When will the youth justice strategy be published?
The work is still ongoing in relation to the, the youth justice strategy. As I said, I've got a meeting, I think in the next week or so with the head of Justice and Home Affairs. So we need to have that meeting in order to look at it so that we can move it as forward as quickly as possible.
And how will that align with this particular strategy, the, the safety communities?
I think obviously the policy and the, the youth justice policy will be worked alongside the building a safer community officers. So they'll be part and parcel of that process. And as I said, we'll be reviewing it. And as I said, I'm due to meet with the coordinator and the chief officer next week. So that will start moving forward and looking at what, what we need to be doing in relation to a youth justice strategy.
And you, can you describe to us as well, please, the, how you and the officers, government, et cetera, take due regard for children's rights as part of the drafting of the youth justice strategy?
Interestingly, I've already had a couple of meetings with the children's commissioner along with the children's minister. And so any strategy that we bring forward will have been seen and discussed and shared with the children's commissioner and all of the, you know, the, the head of the children's services, the children's minister. And obviously, you will, you'll, this panel will also be briefed on that as well. But obviously, it's something that, because you've, you've obviously got the rights of the child and it's important that when we bring legislation to, to the assembly that it's, you know, we have career, careers we have to do now for any, any piece of legislation. And we need, if you, you're affecting the rights of children, then you need to be speaking to the children's commissioner.
And you'll be speaking to all the relevant agencies and stakeholders?
Yes.
That was my next question.
Yes, absolutely.
Can I just remind everyone, we've only got about half an hour left and we still have a lot of questions, so we'll try and keep our questions and answers brief.
I just had a couple of questions about the resilience strategy. Can you just give us an update on the civil contingencies in resilience law?
Do you want to do this?
I can, yeah. So we've briefed the chief minister and the emergencies council on the reasons for new law and the emerging proposals. They're keen that we do it in a proportionate way, so it's appropriate for the legislative capacity we have and that the capacity that all partner agencies have to, to carry out new duties is realistic and can be funded and resourced appropriately. So that's the space we're in with policy development. We're planning to work that up into the next stage to present to the chief minister and the minister within the next month or so and then consult with Jersey Resilience Forum Delivery Group partners. So that's the sort of widest construct of resilience partners, that would be about 40 organisations to get their input into the high-level policy and design. The aim remains to bring forward through the legislative process, the new law hopefully by the end of next year and then have implemented the first tranche of changes as a result of that by the end of the following year, 26. The first tranche of things to focus on, you have to bear with me because where I've printed it out, I can't see the bits in red very well, is risk anticipation and assessment, business continuity, community resilience, warning and informing, collaboration and information sharing. So they would be the things that, duties placed on the core bodies is what the new law's all about, they would be the first things we would be focusing on. There's yellow and green to follow that I can perhaps update you on in writing afterwards. But that's the, the brief update.
Okay. And can you just tell us as well about any actions that are rising up crisis, the crisis resilience improvement plan? I think that's published last year in July.
Yeah.
We just really wonder whether there's any urgent actions still outstanding on that.
There are actions outstanding, I wouldn't necessarily say that they're urgent actions outstanding. We are slightly overdue in publishing an update to that. It was published originally in July, end of July last year, substantively as the response to the independent Covid review. Passage of time has meant that a number of those actions have either been completed or have moved on really quite significantly. So of course, one of them is the development of the new resilience law. We will be publishing an update to the crisis resilience improvement plan, but I would propose that that's the last one. It, it was never really envisaged to be an annual reporting cycle. That will tie up the actions that are finished and be clear about where things are still in flight, where the responsibility for them now is and where information about the actions being completed in the future will arise from. So it will fall into various government departments and, and other work essentially. So that will be done probably within the next one to two months.
Okay, thank you. A report published in June by the Controller of the General on the critical infrastructure resilience, particularly around energy, was clear that capacity in government to manage resilience is currently very limited and that the community risk register is not an effective tool in its current format. So I think the question for us is how are you going to address that and what actions are you going to take to move forward?
Do you want me to carry on? So we have adjusted the resourcing in that area slightly since the CNAG did that review. We now have three extra assistant emergency planning officers. Two have been in post since the beginning of June and one has just started. That has very significantly advanced our work on what we were calling the community risk register, but we may now call the Jersey emergency risk register to just try and be a bit clearer about what it's about. We're anticipating bringing that forward to the next emergencies council meeting, the date of which escapes me, but I think it's the middle of October. And once we've done that, we will be able to publish. So there'll be a publishable version and an internal version, as, as you would expect. And my proposal would be that we come and, at your invitation, come and give you a private briefing on that so that we can talk you through it in some detail in terms of approach. And that will also then help us meet that recommendation of the CNAG that we really must get that done because it's a platform for lots of other things, actually including the new law and drawing everyone's attention to the need for all the different areas that own risk, because of course it's not just government to be treating and tolerating and mitigating that risk appropriately and really owning it.
Minister, as the competent authority for fuel, electricity and gas, can you explain how you've been briefed about your responsibilities in that role, please?
Yes, obviously, as you're aware, my role really, when it comes to this piece of legislation, just is in relation to an emergency. So effectively, when an outage happens or if there was something, basically in a crisis. So I've been briefed that if there's a crisis, then obviously it, it rests with me. Once that crisis has been averted, therefore it then moves on to the next individual, which would be the infrastructure minister. I'm quite confident that I sort of know what my responsibilities are in relation to those. And obviously it falls within, it falls to me because it falls into the domain of the emergency services and any response that would happen to those type of emergencies.
Because we, we did notice that the report, 118 of 2024, which lists the competent authority powers of ministers, isn't included in the list of ministerial functions. And we're just wondering whether that was deliberate or whether that was an oversight?
I would need to check.
If you pop that in writing, that would be.
Yeah.
So it's not in, it's not in the responsibilities anymore?
No, it's not included in the list of your ministerial functions. So we're just wondering whether that was deliberate or whether that was.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
That's news, oh, that's good, that's news to me.
We need to check because the, the primary legislation obviously takes precedence over that. Or, or not takes precedence, but is.
It could be sitting with somebody else.
Yeah, the law's still there. Okay, I'll check. I'll hand you back to Catherine.
Okay. So I've got some questions now about the police budget. So minister, yes, we, we've looked at the revenue heads of expenditure and noticed that over the next four years, the budget seems to drop every year. So can, could you provide us with some background to the proposed decreases over these next four years?
The States of Jersey Police, as you know, received, have received significance brought over the last two years in relation to the emergency major incidents, which have been critical to ensuring the, the appropriate responses. In relation to the budgets, they still remain as a challenge to us. This is recognised by the council of ministers and also yourselves, as, as you've alluded to in the past. What we've been able to achieve with the work from the head of departments and others was, was that the saving requirements that were put on to all of the departments under JHA have been significantly less than other departments. So the savings are less, but as you rightly point out, there's, the, the budgets aren't, aren't increasing over the next few years. I think from looking at the savings, I think what it is, is that obviously there was money put in to the budgets in relation to the extra needed to fund all of the extra pay increases that were, were there. And so that looked initially like there was extra money, but there isn't. I think I'll just ask Robin to be able to clarify a few of these figures because obviously he's been around a bit longer than me.
Essentially, over the last few years, last four years, there have been additional funds come into the SOJP budget. But as part of our collective responsibility, I think through all eight, all departments, we are also driving savings as well. And ultimately, what, as we have driven savings, as new money has come in, we've given, effectively given money back as part of savings. So we're, we're not quite standstill, but we are fairly close to that. As the minister rightly says though, we have both in this current government and indeed the previous government, there has been a recognition that States of Jersey Police is probably as busy as it's ever been. And we are currently investigating 15 homicides. That's 10 from the tragedy of Hope de Mont, three from the sinking of the Lacoon II and of course, the tragedy of Charlie and Dean Coleman, the double fatal crash. So that has been an enormous, or three enormous investigations. So we have been very well funded from, effectively from day one, from the 8th and the 10th of December 2022 and onwards. That funding has continued, not only last year, but also into this year and also into next year. That funding has continued, not only last year, but also into this year and also into next year. Uh, because it, it's not just the funding of those very, very large investigations, very complex investigations. It's also that we, we pull officers and staff from other places to go into that. That leaves us a gap to deli- to deliver with what we often describe as business as usual. So in many ways, we've been, we've, we've driven savings, but, but to be absolutely transparent, we have received additional funding from government, the last government and indeed this government, in recognition that it is unprecedented in the history of States of Jersey Police. So in many ways, I could say that that's insulated the impact uh to a degree. We, of course, have to properly um account for that. The, the final point I'd make in terms of the savings for uh the back end of this year and into twenty twenty five, the ministers correct that those savings were reduced. In fact, I think they were reduced across the board for, I think, what was described as frontline services, which we are grateful, but they are nevertheless savings in addition to uh the work we have to do. Um, a- a- as you've heard me say before, um, and it's, and it's particularly the case for States of Jersey Police, around ninety percent of our budget is people. So inevitably, if we are trying to drive savings, more often than not, it will be people and trying to drive efficiencies with people. So we have identified our savings for twenty twenty five and that is two members of police staff and not police officers. Uh, for, and for twenty twenty six as well, as well as a small reduction in our digital forensics unit, where we did have some growth, um, but that, some of that growth was reduced, in fact, it was reduced by twenty percent. Uh, and I'm hopeful, uh, in the conversations that I've had with the minister and indeed a, a conversation, brief conversation with the chief minister, um, we have talked about these things, uh, and he is, he is uh mindful of, of what he describes as a sort of frontline services. So, uh, we'll look forward to a meeting, I think we've got later on this year, Minister, uh, to talk about the budget for twenty five and into twenty six.
Okay, thank you. And, and with your reference to how it's very, the budget, the budget for police is very much due with the number of staff. Um, are there two hundred and fifteen police officers at the moment?
There are not.
Because, because that's what was planned as a minimum number, wasn't it?
Yes, the, the, the number two on five was originally uh quoted back in twenty nineteen stroke twenty, uh, when the late Len Norman uh, uh, secured an increase in funding and that number was at two on five. Uh, that number uh over those years has reduced. Uh, originally, that funding went into community policing and to the drugs unit and a number of other things. We have made some efficiencies with that, so for example, uh, where we've had police officers doing a police staff role, I, I have effectively cashed those posts in. So for example, um, we, we had a sergeant doing duties. The challenge I put to my staff uh is, do you need a warrant card to do that job? You still need a degree of resilience because we police an island where we can't easily get mutual aid in the event. And we've seen in these, in, in recent times, the importance of maintaining a, a degree of police numbers. So the number is not two on five, the current affordable number is two zero one.
And do you think that's sufficient?
With, with the funding that we currently get in support of uh Operation Spire, Operation Nectar, the funding is sufficient. But once that funding, because that allows us, that insulates us to, to uh deal with the business as usual, we are as, just as busy as we always are, but we've got the additional uh challenges. My hope is that challenge will become less and less, particularly as we move into next year, depending on how the investigations go. Um, there will be the discussion to be had with the minister, as she has indicated, indeed the chief minister has indicated, later on this year, to talk about into twenty twenty five, back end and into twenty twenty six.
Um, so to sort of follow on from this uh possible resourcing pressure, in the police's annual report for twenty twenty three, it states that this year's force intelligence bureau operations have predominantly been tasked to Jersey Customs and Immigration Service due to resourcing pressure, linked to the major incidents. Uh, States of Jersey Police has not had a proactive capability for most of twenty twenty three. So um we're just wondering what impact this might have had on any outcomes and what's the oversight for these operations between police and customs?
Oh, I'll start with that, Mark, and then, so, so we have a joint team. So we have, we work very, very closely uh with our colleagues at, at JACIS, a- a- as you would expect, because we fight the same fight and we have slightly different powers and we have uh similar skills. There is an inevitability, given the demands that we've had, as I've already uh indicated over the last eighteen months, that we have increasingly spoken and liaised with our uh customs colleagues. Uh, because uh a lot of our uh intelligence function a- and the resource that's in that uh bureau i- is diverted into other matters, the matters I've already spoken to. So I'm not remotely surprised by that. Uh, I'm not greatly concerned by that, as long as we are making sure that we are keeping Ireland as safe, particularly with intelligence relating to drugs, organised crime and exploitation. Mark, did you want to add anything from your side of things?
Uh, very briefly, I think if you look at the um results that have been produced, um, you know, which manifest themselves in, in the courts, particularly around organised crime, um, you know, they've, they've been very, very good. Um, and you look at other indicators like, you know, the street price of drugs, which is a good indication of availability, uh, and the intelligence that's available. So I think it sort of paints a picture that, um, you know, the effectiveness of the joint unit is, is good. Um, and also the external inspection that takes place from the Office of Surveillance Commissioners, um, which again, you know, painted a, a very positive picture of how the unit's operating and what it's producing.
Um, yeah, I'd, I'd also like to make um a comment in, in relation to that is, is that um what I've s- seen um since being the Minister for Justice and Home Affairs is, is the actual real close working um between customs and immigration and the police. Even though that has always been the case, I think it's probably far more evident now that the relationship is working very, very well. And there's a lot more training, a lot more working together. Um, and um they always did work together, don't get me wrong, it's always been part and parcel. But I, what I, what I did, uh, what I have noticed, having um had the inputs, is, is that that is working exceptionally well. Um, and i- it's good to know that when there is, you know, um, a need for some staff to be diverted from one, that the other one can actually pick up that diversion.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just have a couple of quick questions, more to do with the parish police forces. So, um, Minister, can you advise if there's any central financial support from government to support the parish police forces with their operational requirements? Um, for example, uh, we understand that parishes have been told they have to purchase a laptop for each centenary, it's a cost of around one thousand pounds each at the moment. So we're just wondering about the support for the parish police.
Um, yeah, the laptop um item has been sort of around for quite a while. Um, I've had a consultation with um the new chef de comité, um, that's not chef, the new chair of the Shefter Police. And basically, um, we've asked them to update, because there had been a previous application which hadn't um gone through to the end of, right through to the end of the process. And so what I've asked them to do is to actually update that uh application. Because uh there are funds in the C O C F, however, um, like with anything else, they have to make an application to those funds and they are sort of one off things. So it's, it's things that ca- that are a one off, it's not something that's continuous. So um I've asked them to update those processes. I've also spoken to somebody at the States of Jersey Police about the elements in relation to um what actually is necessary. Because I think um if you look across the island, uh, I, off the top of my head, there's roughly sixty centenaires. Um, the need for, is there, is there a need for each centenary to have a, a laptop? Do all centenaires go into court? Uh, uh, because I, I believe they can't share the laptops. So there's, there's lots, there's lots of work that's being, is being done in order that we can facilitate being able to support them with that purchase of that laptop. In relation to government, um, there's, there is no funding from government and obviously there can't be any funding from uh within the States of Jersey Police because obviously that's, uh, they're, they're under their own funding pressures. But I think um there, as I said, um, I've had a brief uh meeting with somebody from the States of Jersey Police. I intend to um get a, a group together um in order that we can sort of try and work out how this could be done. Um, but as I said, with budgets as they are, it is quite tight. I just, um, I just think that we need to have some sort of, I'm not saying a business case, but we just need to know exactly what is required. Because certainly from my experience or knowledge is, is that not everybody will necessarily need a laptop. And I just wonder whether we're sort of almost um providing too many, if that makes sense. So I just thi- I've just asked the person who's taken over responsibility um to actually um come back to me, um, the new, um, a new set of, um, of what exactly they need, so, so that it can...